All right, uh, I call this meeting November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, a call to order. And is there any agenda additions or deletions? Anybody have anything? Okay. At this point, I would ask for approval of the October twenty-fifth minutes.
So moved.
Is there any thing in there that looks?
I thought that looked pretty good.
Okay.
Seemed good to me.
All those in favor in motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Katie. Uh, Highway Road Commissioners Report.
Uh, just up grade, updated like the grader. It hasn't come back yet. We rented one from the dealership at actually a pretty decent rate. Hoping our grader, the town grader will be back in service within a week. Down for, what, five weeks now?
Are you still considering looking into buying a new one to replace that old grader?
Eventually, yes. Been working with Heidi on budgets and stuff and figure out how we can swing it in two years. Other than that, we're doing extensive ditching and removing trees on a Haven Hill Road at this time.
Went over there and-
We've been grading. The grader that we rented has been gone.
Yeah, I noticed.
When it does, when that one there isn't, broke down. That seems to break down every time we use it, but that's all.
Did you get through today with it, without a breakdown?
Got through today without a breakdown.
Did East Timbers Road?
Yeah, East Timbers Road. We're all done on the west side town. And he'll be moving on this side, east side tomorrow.
I did look at that Haven Hill Road. Boy, what a difference that is. You can see coming from the Wallingford section to town section, holy macro.
Yeah.
So you just cut all those trees recently, right?
Well, we started last late winter.
Yeah.
And then we're using, we're using that for fill-in project. But now we've got other program, our other projects all tightened up and our grants and stuff are all done, so. Long snow's not flying and we can dig, we're digging.
Okay, looks good up there. I don't know if anybody else is-
I went on it early on in the project. It's been a few weeks, so.
Some different now.
Look at, it looks like, uh, went out all little big trees and stuff there. That's gonna drive that road up good shape.
The road will be a lot healthier and they'll, hopefully, instead of waiting the end of May for it thaws out, it'll be thawed out like the rest of the roads are.
Yeah, and get a little sun in there.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Any questions for the Road Commission?
Yes, just one little, just to mention, and it may not be a thing, but up on the middle road with the dry bridge right by Pat Murray's. On the north end of it, on the right-hand side as you're going north, there all of a sudden seems to be a dip creating there.
Yeah, it was, uh, actually, that's been there the last four years.
Yeah, it's been there, but maybe it's just me, but it looked like it was-
It's starting to increase a little bit.
Yeah.
And I got another one up by the, actually, my mailbox.
Yeah.
Another dip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
I wanted to get a little bit of hot mix stick in there, not just coal patch.
Yeah.
Any word on painting on Walk Mountain Road?
That was another thing. Alan May, he stopped into the garage last Wednesday and I had mentioned to him, these were better roads in the state. And I made that comment about the paint and he said the state still cannot even, it's all backordered. They can't get paint to pick the lines on the roads.
May I ask, I reached out to V-Trans.
After the last meeting and he said to wait patiently.
Which means they won't get painted this way. They won't get painted before.
That they'll do something-
Too cold now, anyway.
Rather dangerous.
Dangerous.
With the curves and everything.
Noticed the last heavy rain that we had going back up it, uh, probably was about six or seven o'clock at night.
At night, it was.
And now you can't even see the edges of the road, so it's where the center-
We, uh, did go up, put up the extra delineators and stuff like that reflected, so. All we can do, that's it. That's all I have.
Great. Um, approval of the Select Board warrants, they're right here, if anybody wants to take a look at how we're spending the money. And, uh, guess, do you guys have any questions or?
I got one question on Tier Road.
Okay.
Put some more fill in there. I don't know what kind it is, but it's kind of black. And it raised it up another three, four inches. And between that and my power lines, Comcast, uh, Green Mountain Power and, uh, phone, phone.
Yep.
Across the road. When you go up through there with a ten-wheeler, dump it a load.
Yeah.
Spread it. No, you ain't gonna make it.
No.
Tear the lines down. Same, starting down by his line is getting pretty close.
Yeah, and, uh, the Walk Mountain side, Greg.
A Viking Road. Yeah, yeah, on the Walk Mountain Road, right, yeah.
We just, you said something about black material?
Well, it's kind of purplish-black, whatever.
That was something we just tried as a different product.
Yeah.
And we just realized how much it's stoned up. We won't be using that anymore.
I'm just saying the road's going too high. What I would like to get up there is one of the ten-wheelers and put the box up. Come up to the line and see how much space you got, if you got any.
When, uh, when we're dumping?
No, when it's empty.
Oh, when it's empty?
Just the trucks empty, it's up higher.
Just to see what the clearance is.
Or when the body's down, just driving through.
Box is up, put the box up right next to the line.
Yeah.
And I want to see the clearance of my line and the dump box.
You, you'll find that all those lines are minimum thirteen-six and everywhere we go, every, uh, every road in the state, you cannot dump a box.
Yeah.
Unless you got the high-tension lines or something like that.
Right, yeah, I had to go out and-
We're just worried about the trucks coming up and-
I just hollered at the driver. I didn't think it just-
Yeah, he actually made that comment and he knew the line was there.
Oh, okay. That's why I was wondering if anything-
I went up there and looked at that, the service, the electric service line is way up above what the measurements are.
Electric services line and I had, uh, wife changed over the Comcast. That's, I told him, put that in between.
Yeah.
Actually, the phone line is one on the bottom.
Right.
Phone lines are our biggest challenge to-
Just go down-
Because they don't maintain them.
Go down East Timbers Road and look at that.
What I tried to do is go to the pole to, you know where Garden is right there?
Yeah, yeah.
Put one right in the middle of that and then come to the house. That way you could almost go straight across and there wouldn't be a problem with a truck. But those are side dump anyways, aren't they, when you sand?
Yes, the bodies aren't in the air. Um, we do, however, above you, past Chita's place-
Think there's any up to there, is there?
Past Chita's place, we've had, we got a couple of low lines.
Is there?
Past the driveway up through there, actually, we got them to lift one of them last year.
That's where, just on the other side of where Tucker Peterson just built his-
Yeah, right up in there.
Yep.
Um, actually, we're almost not clearing them with the bodies down.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
It's really low.
So, oh, yeah, they're real low.
And that, that's a phone line, so.
That's why I was watching the dump box come up through and I said, that baby's up there fifteen feet.
We have, uh, every time we dump, that's our number one, number one thing. Where are the lines? And usually the guy on the grader, the guy on the grader is our guide.
Oh.
To me, whoever's driving the truck or something. To watch that. And you watch, um, not change subject, but the, like, say, pipe paving. When they're paving the roads, the guy on the paver.
Oh, yeah.
He directs that truck and say, up, down, or to go under or over, or under the lines and stuff. But any, any road with dumped body up, you will hit the lines.
Problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm just down below them and I got my Comcast line that runs across.
Yeah.
And it is hard to see. It blends in a little bit, but you just don't want it taken out because then you lose everything. So, that's the only thing I'm worried about.
That's my problem.
So, yeah, you lose everything.
So the material that you use, you said-
How fast they are.
Yeah, it's not gonna, and where we got it, actually, we used it for the shoulder material on Walk Mountain Road. The shoulders and, and the contractor, we got it from, recommended we use it on, try it on the dirt roads. And that's where we tried it.
They packed down, no problem.
Was that a dust issue, too?
That actually, actually kept dust down.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't have no dust.
They packed down, I gotta say, that one, packed down good, but I'm-
But it's stoned up.
That was, I didn't bother with too much of that. I was just saying, it went up again, so I'm, you know. Well, see, the house was put in there in sixty-five.
Yeah.
If you're looking at the road, it's probably, well, I'd say a good fifteen, sixteen inches lower. The road, the road was actually lower than the land originally. You could go, the only reason you knew somebody was going up there, right across where my back door is, you go across the Ken House. It's a ledge, it runs right through there. You could, it would help with shape when they hit that one spot. They never did anything to it, so.
There's another product that we just, actually, we just, um, paired up with, actually, Fabian did a, Fabian's did a job on Donner Lane just last week.
Okay, I see that.
And they had to do a, that, the resident hired him to, them to do their, his driveway. And our corner of Walk Mountain Road was a drop.
Yeah.
So we worked with them and got that same stuff, because they had the roller there anyways. And that stuff come out of Murkowski, it's all recycled asphalt and it's black and I'm, I'm quite impressed.
Is that solid up, like a, like blacktop?
Yeah, but it'd be nice if it was like July when it was gonna heat up.
Yeah.
And it really pack it, it would actually-
Yeah, makes it harder.
Yeah. So it'll be interesting to see how it holds up this winter.
I would think that plowing, if you didn't have the feet on the plow, that'd dig that all up, wouldn't it?
We'll see.
Big shoes out, but I don't remember late. That's what my father said years ago.
I, I think we're gonna come to another ten years, that ditch board we bought, I bet you'll be blowing snow off the road not using salt and stuff. My prediction.
Well, the could, the state, the state in their wisdom.
Yeah, my question is-
It'll be electric.
Possibilities, just for other vehicles. Down by, uh, Cota's driveway, where he goes in, passed out a little bit, with a sign in, it just said, you know, dangerous low wires. If you could do that, I can do it myself. I wasn't paid for it. I don't bother me, you know, I just wanted to, nobody could cry about it.
Uh, would be something.
It's actually, I don't wanna say illegal, but them, the, the wire's supposed to be thirteen-six minimum. Whether it's a power company or Comcast or phone, it doesn't matter.
See, now-
So they're-
I don't think it's ever been checked. You mean Walk Mountain Center where they cross the road?
Yeah, have a ditch, yeah.
But what's been happening with the phone company is Comcast and all these characters.
Good luck getting them.
Right, because, like, setting poles and all that, they had, uh, south of Roof War, it used to be their territory and anytime there had to be new poles, they had to set them. Now, they don't do that anymore. Green Mountain Power has made a deal with them where they change out all the poles.
They set all the poles.
Yeah. We had an issue, I don't want to extend this on too much tonight, but we had an issue on Coal River Road, um, before Shee Hee's Corner. And actually, the line had dropped down and it was going parallel with the road, but it was enough. So it was actually, so actually I got a hold of them because the log trucks were actually swiping that.
Rip it right off.
Well, that's just like-
Rubbing that line.
East Timbers Road up by Art Peterson's house.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Did they change it?
Nope.
Nope. It's still hanging there and had a rag tied to them mid-span.
You don't have, you don't have road weight anymore on the trucks. I don't think so. Log truck went by the house the other day, it was triple axle on the back. But good thing he was going up seventeen, Walker Mountain Road, not up my way. He never would've made it, no. He'd have made it with a truck, but the wires are gone with him. Yeah, it wouldn't have loaded up.
Well, that's where DOT comes in for overhaul.
Yeah. So is that, should we reach out to them and have them come in and check it?
What's this?
DOT, take a measurement, DOT?
If it's DOT, I wonder if we put a call in for it?
If they would have any clout or not, I don't know.
I was just wondering what, if, you know, if it has to come down to it. I don't, wouldn't mind putting a post in the garden. I just gotta fight with the boss on that. Once the post is in there, I ain't gonna worry about it.
So in other words, you're suggesting a lift pole?
Saying the, the lines from the pole to that pole would be way over what, you know, I'd have to worry about. Then I could come to the house, you know.
It's a lift pole that you'd be putting in.
Yeah, I got to put in that Green Mountain Power pole.
And that, that would be-
I was gonna do it a long time ago, but should put a garden in there. That went with the wind.
Yep.
Now, we just didn't know if, like, you know, where the speed limit sign is. If they could have a sign just put down below it, just says beware of overhead lines or something. Just to give them a heads up, be, you know, really don't want to have the power ripped out because you never know when they're gonna come and fix it.
Yeah, we caught it a couple of times.
You know, a couple of weeks before you get your power put back in.
As far as power, Green Mountain Power seems to be on board with, you know, quick responses, provided they're not gonna storm somewhere.
And the other part is they're attached to the house, so if they get ripped out, they're taking the siding and everything with it. So we just didn't know, you know, just to give a heads up for people.
I'm making a motion that we have Katie reach out to, whether it's V-Trans or DOT who enforces wire heights. To have them-
One might know it's Eddie.
Yeah, Eddie might know too, but do some research and find out who, who's in charge of making sure that stuff's where it's supposed to be. And if we don't get anywhere, we can revisit the topic of a sign. Let's, let's see if we can get some, get some results first. If they're, if they'll go in and they'll do what they need to do to get them up, then we can-
You're running the same problem.
I mean, a sign alone, you're like-
If you serve a monster, a year later, they raise the road up again. So you don't really gain nothing on the deal. Not in the long run.
But you're, you're-
The house is not gonna go up any higher.
Primarily, you guys haven't added height to that road base, right?
We put material on it, but I think if we find the right material, won't we keep adding like we have? Our problem was last year was throughout the winter, we ended up with potholes because they're thon and freezing. Throughout the, throughout the winter. And then we ended up with potholes and ended up with mud. And the only thing to do is you could, you know, bring in a bony stuff to get a base back and-
Yeah, they did that up on the pole.
Because they were getting stuck up by you, up above the guide rails.
Well, that's, uh,
And that's where, hopefully, with the material that we, that's why we're trying, we're trying to be open-minded, try different materials and-
Well, that's why I was-
When we had that mud problem or whatever, we're trying to put the bone in there and then cap it. And actually, it looks like, I'm pretty sure, hopefully, it's better. And we've had problems like bump road east, east street, stuff like that.
I figured that stayed pretty good. I didn't think it was gonna stay because they just, you know, even guys graded it and-
Right.
It was just laying there. So I said, oh, rain's gonna come and just go. But it didn't go.
Nope.
Didn't go.
Well, let's, uh, to continue this, well, you guys will keep us informed too, if you're seeing some issues.
I'm going out there with my tape, measure the heck out of that.
Was your motion seconded?
I don't wanna light up.
Go and get your zap.
Rick seconded the motion, he said.
Just, uh-
All right, there's been a motion made, seconded, um, we've had some pretty good discussion on this. All those in favor in motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so let's, uh, you'll keep us in a loop as well. But when we finally, maybe, hopefully, you'll see somebody out there with a stendo stick and a tape measure.
Stick.
Can I have you guys' names to the record?
Hmm?
Can I have your names, please?
Michael. Michael Lanfear.
Okay. And you, sir?
Same, but I'm a junior.
Oh, okay, perfect.
He's a senior, I'm the junior.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, guys, moving right along, but thank you.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Old Business Animal Control Ordinance Amendment. So-
Good night, guys.
You too, thank you.
Safe.
Good night, guys.
Safe.
So, Mr. Chairman, my understanding is the first order of business we need to do is to rescind it, just because it needs, it needs more work. So I'm gonna make a motion to rescind the animal control ordinance, which we proposed on, I believe, ten-twenty-eight.
Five, I think it was last.
Yeah, I think it was-
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
Was that the last?
Sorry, ten-twenty-five, yeah, so, gonna rescind that, uh, animal control ordinance of ten-twenty-five.
Good night. All right, is there any further discussion on that? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now, Katie, what, what was the, uh, oh, carry on, Maureen.
Um.
Not for fight, man.
So there's a couple of options going forward, which you would like to do. Um, I feel like we've gotten some feedback from a couple of different people surrounding the animal control ordinance. And I think you either need to differentiate between a domestic pet and a domestic animal. Or keep this to maybe just a dog, wolf, and ferret animal ordinance and have a separate domestic animal ordinance.
I know I had some concerns reached out to me. I don't know if you did. I, I, I took a couple of phone calls and- And I also had-
Thank you.
Family members that reached out to me too. Um, I, I realize we have one situation that's driving us.
And it's still happening.
And it is still happening.
I actually did get a phone call, um, from a resident who's having the same issue but with pigs.
Okay.
Getting out and causing property damage.
What part of town?
Um.
Walker Mountain, probably.
I can't remember. I don't know if I have it still.
South Creek Road?
I don't think so. It was someone's pet pig that was getting out.
Oh, pet pig.
And couldn't call the owner. They wouldn't come over and get it, and so.
Okay. I, I don't know, I honestly just, I don't know what to think anymore after taking the phone calls and after getting reached out to. I, um, I realize it's one, really one driving. Do we have any other recourse at this point?
Is there any way to take care of that one individual without having a whole ordinance?
Well, that's what, that's what I'm wondering. Rather than go on the route, because we're, we had to rescind it now, so you're thirty days out on anything anyway, again. So is there any other recourse to try and get this under control?
It don't, uh, we had another issue with a dog that was vicious.
Correct, but that fell within the ordinance.
Right, that's the established ordinance.
And that's the issue, because the ordinance doesn't speak to the issue we're dealing with. Now-
Can we add just that equine to that?
Add equine to it, you mean? And leave, and leave other agricultural animals alone?
I don't think so.
And no say to discrimination.
Because then we could always, if, if there is every, any other animal, uh, issue that is similar to this. In other words, constantly having somebody's cows get out or somebody's pigs get out.
I had that problem this morning.
Huh? Nah, then we can redefine, but if it's just to the horse thing.
Just one individual that's-
And, but it has to be a broad thing. It can't be just one individual.
Now, the other thing that, and this was brought up to me by an individual. They said, if this is a continual problem, the person who receives the damage, so, you know, I know Mr. Underhill was here a few weeks ago and he's been on the receiving end of some damage and all that. He's within his rights to request the individual's homeowner insurance to file a claim. And that, if that happens too many times, the individual's homeowner's insurance is gonna step in. And it's gonna make sure that things get taken care of.
It'll be just cancellation probably.
But I think what's gonna, but what would happen with that premise would be that, um, it would cost the person who has been, um, the subject of all the footprints from the horses and stuff tearing up their property, where they may even have to then hire a lawyer or something along these lines.
We've had a couple of times where cows have gotten out and have gotten on residential property and the homeowners-
We all have.
We've, I'm sure Cash has experienced it too.
Worked it out.
No, the homeowner's insurance pays. That's the way it works. So I'm just wondering if the insurance route has been, has been looked at at all in this case? Because, I mean, let's face it, the, if this was to turn into, you know, five different residents file on this person's homeowner's insurance, the homeowner's insurance is gonna start taking a look at this.
Right. Rick and I stopped up there. I always like to have a list of eyes.
Yep.
We looked at the property and Rick, you have taken videos of it, if anybody wants to see.
I left my phone at home. I'll see it next week.
And then we actually went to visit with that individual who's, who owns the animals, the horses. And then had her walk with us onto the folks' property who have been destroyed.
Experiencing damage, yeah.
And, um, we did tell that person that we are considering an ordinance, uh, that would possibly say, our animal ordinance control folks would go to this individual and say, this is your first warning, we're not giving you a fine. If anything after this, you're gonna be fined. Okay, and this individual then told us that she in fact put her property, uh, for sale on the, on whatever that organization where they have all the-
Okay.
Uh, horse stuff, right, Rick?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, but then she said that she'd come over with her tractor with a front-end loader on it with dirt and fill in those holes. And we said, not until you talk to the landowner and get permission to come onto this property to do that. Since then, I got a text from the property owner who had the damage done, that that person did contact them and they came, she came over and filled those holes.
Fixed, fixed it?
Right.
Uh, so at least a step in the right direction?
Right. So that neighbors are starting to, but I think in this case, um, we should consider an ordinance for future, and, and if you guys are just saying, well, just for horses at this point, that might be one consideration. But for me, um, you know, I own cows and stuff and they used to get out once in a while and I'd go and whatever, you know, fix whatever property was damaged. Personally, where I lived at that time was up in the woods, so I didn't have too much work to do. I think that we should still consider having some kind of an ordinance where, um, if you don't wanna specifically say an animal breed, we could say that if there's an ongoing issue where any kind of animal destroys or disrupts a neighbor, our animal control folks, who are the sheriffs, can go up and investigate. And if it's where the town has to step in and say, well, all right, we're gonna find you for letting whatever kind of animal it is get out to another person's property and destroy something, then we have the right to, uh, enforcement to find them. That's my opinion. What do you think of it? I see the need, uh, could be, uh, for-
I see the need, uh, could be, uh, for, if you will, um, other animals besides cats, dogs, and ferrets. I don't know what damage a ferret would do, but, um, and it's, granted, it's not that often that we have that happen. But at the same time, the recourse for the damaged property is, uh, small claims court and quite honestly, small claims court is a joke. Um, the last I knew of it unless, you know, Kevin, if something's changed, but, you know, you go in there and file a claim. I did several cases in the, as a court officer there. And, uh, the person that's, was, um, won the case, the other person had eight, seven years to pay that off. And then if they couldn't do it, they could refile for another seventy-five dollars and if you go another seven years or eight years, whatever it was, it was quite a bit of time. Um.
That's what I'm saying.
And I, I'm, granted, uh, and I'm not picking on obviously the farmers, cause I married a farmer's daughter. Accidental stuff gets out, but if they're not taking measures to, um, fix it, those are the people that are, are what I'm seeing that just aren't getting it. You know, like in, when we went up and saw this situation where we went to, I saw the reason why the animals were getting out.
Yeah.
And that, you know.
A good fence. Not a fence that I would think that.
It would, it was, uh, it wasn't any wonder that the animals got out and without, if you don't make, uh, effort to repair, um, then there, there should be a recourse. And if we don't have a recourse as a town, then the people haven't the representation in my opinion.
Yes, you saw, you're a farmer. You saw the fence and what it looked like where her horses were. I mean.
You can't, it, it's all one person's opinion. The only recourse I see is if those property owners that got damaged that all of a sudden, like Robert said, they go after the homeowner's insurance and as far as the court thing, they keep it local, not push it that far unless needed.
I, I question, I mean, so I question too how far an ordinance, what, what it's really going to accomplish because if money's not an issue and you're fining them twenty-five bucks or thirty bucks or fifty bucks or whatever, they're just gonna keep, they're just gonna keep throwing money at it and they're not gonna really, what, what's gonna, what's really gonna be accomplished?
But you make the fine enough to, to get their attention.
That's what I'd say. Build a fine, a warning.
Yeah, I agree. A ten dollar, twenty dollar, fifteen dollar.
It's not gonna do anything.
It's not gonna amount to.
But if you have a hundred and fifty dollars, uh, after this, after you have the formal warning from our control officer and then it happens again, we will have a hundred and fifty dollar fine. And if it happens again, we will up the fine, you know, whatever we determine it might be.
Yeah, but aren't you, aren't you gonna have that's one kind of an ordinance to back that up?
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
You're gonna, but also.
Nothing now to back that up.
No, you got nothing right now. But you don't wanna get into the situation, let's face it, farmers are having a rough time. You don't wanna make it real rough on them right now. Uh, I, I kinda like Robert's thought there on, uh, looking at the homeowner's insurance, because that happened two, three times. They're gonna say, wait a minute here.
What if they don't have insurance?
You know?
They gotta have insurance if they.
Homeowner does, too?
If they got a mortgage or anything.
Now, there's gotta be a mortgage on that place.
Well, yeah, she said she's gonna put it back up for sale.
Yeah, I'm sure there, there's gotta be, I would think.
I'm just looking at the, uh, the side of the individual who has the damage.
In this case, it's more than one.
Oh, yeah.
There's three or four individuals that live down from that where the horses are that have had damage done to their property. We only thought there was the next door neighbor, but then when Bob come in, that guy that owns that weight house with the big pillars, he had damage. Uh, then there's a, a person that lives across the street from Bob. It's the last house on the left that, before you go up the hill. They had some damage done to their property. Uh, and it's just, you know, from the horses running around on their lawn, but their lawns are soft, so they had.
Is there more than one animal getting out then or is it just one?
More than one.
Yeah, there's at least two.
There's only two. It sure has two.
Yeah.
But one of them's a pretty good sized animal.
But if, but I think the, the, the thing that stands out for me is if somebody in town comes to the says this person continually causes trouble, if we send our animal control officer up there, the sheriff's department, and they have no authority, then what the hell are we doing here?
So, what's been done in the past? I mean, we've been an agricultural town for never. So, I guess I question what's, what has happened in the past or is this just, we've never, or have we never run into the situation where?
We've never, we've never had the neglect.
Right, that's the issue.
That was pretty serious now.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's a good word, neglect.
And, uh, and, uh, you know, your, your family's farm.
Oh, I know. The reality is the agricultural families, I think, of the town, if something like this was happening, you take care of it. You do whatever you need to do. So, I guess my question is, another avenue here, is animal neglect on the table?
And we've done that before, right here when the dogs.
Done up here, yeah.
Right on Middle Road and.
Animal damage.
Animals put down.
Well, I know, but I'm talking about there's even within the, within the state.
When you're saying neglect though, that means feeding them and.
Yeah.
Shelter.
Yeah.
It's a totally different thing.
And they have feed and they got shelter. It neglect from proper fence repair.
Right.
So, again, where town ordinance doesn't speak, state statute comes in. Is there any, are there any state statutes on the books that would govern the situation?
I don't think so.
Oh, see, yeah, I would suggest.
If you have something, we can ask leagues and cities.
And we'll start this whole conversation at our next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that seems reasonable to me.
Why don't we have Katie contact leagues and cities and see what they say? If there's something on, already on the books that the states have.
If there's a state.
Whatever I guess.
To do is research the Moseur incident up on Route Four.
That's true, cause there would have been something that would have come out of there.
They would find out the basis for the charges that Rose Kennedy charged him for that cow getting out of the car.
Right.
And the neglect was on the fence.
Right.
I bet you there's something on the state books.
Can you reference that with Katie? She can.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, that guy's looking at a year in jail. I don't know if he ever did, but.
You know.
He pled all, he ended up probation. You could probably look at that, you know, go back and read the paper or.
See what came out of it.
Yeah.
But was there a?
Well, she probably would probably reference the, uh.
Was there a person killed in that though? Was there a person killed in that or no?
Right.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And the issue is the state police found the tree down on the fence.
Oh, I see.
But the animal had gotten out several times.
But if you look historically back at instances like that, usually something got put through the legislature within a year or two after that probably, is my guess.
That's okay.
Let's just see where that road goes.
All right.
Then we can think about it again.
Let us move along. School zone speed limit discussion.
That was an interesting.
First of all, have any of you guys really looked at the speed limit? Uh, not the limit, but what?
Yeah.
Did you?
Right off the traffic.
Right.
Yeah.
And did you notice towards the end that somebody was doing a hundred and something miles an hour?
Hundred and twenty-one.
Yeah, something.
Is that what it was?
I don't know if that's correct.
Well, this says the maximum was sixty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I was looking at this and.
But when I looked down at the report that he gave, all the way towards the end, there was, I swear to God, I should have made a copy of that.
If you average it all out, it won't come out to a good average, cause you have the sawmill there with a lot of traffic that's slowing down, making a turn. And also you got firm vehicles that only travel up to twenty miles an hour.
Yeah. The biggest thing I got out of it was the, was a fair amount of increase on that road regardless of compare, compared to, uh.
Of traffic.
Yeah, of traffic.
The number counting.
Above the speed limit, yeah.
But I couldn't believe the amount of vehicles that use that road.
Oh, I, I agree. Put a toll booth in, but.
Meaning according to this, seven thousand four hundred and seventeen vehicles were above the speed limit and that's a forty mile per hour zone. And that's zipping by the school. That to me is a bit much.
So, what's our next step? I see you have a quote here.
Yeah, so I think last week we decided to wait till the traffic study is done and then decide, do you wanna put in a school zone speed limit? Do you want it to be all the time? Do you want it to be drop off and pickup times and then cost splitting? And the quote there is for if you chose to do, um, like, speed limit when flashing. So.
I'd rather see the speed limit on that whole road go to thirty-five.
Instead of putting on.
And then more enforcement.
More enforcement when.
In other words.
They, they, they don't have enough personnel to do what they need to do now.
Well, we hope that changes, but, um, if they have to concentrate on that road during the, I think the.
That's not fair for the rest of the town people.
That's true, but, um, typically all I hear about are the hotspots and when I, when I get the calls, I relay it to the lieutenant and he relays it to the enforcement people. So, they do concentrate on the, on the spots that I've been called about.
I think, I think my thought there are to go with the flashing lights and the speed limit, just be in the school zone, uh, and leave the rest of the road at forty. Yeah, you take it down to thirty-five and, uh, they're not gonna abide by, well, it shows you right here, they're not abiding by forty.
They're not abiding by it now.
So, and the enforcement is not there. Whether the sheriff's department is short on help or what, I don't know. But I've got a number of calls over the year, over the summer, that the sheriff's department have not been doing what they should be doing in certain parts of town. I can't speak for the whole town.
Well, you let me know, I'll let them, let them know.
And ask that the speed limit up by your house there in Nicole, up by where the Cole River goes through, and ask for a, a readjustment of the speed limit there. Just adjust it down because cars are coming, um, especially around that turn.
Yeah.
Okay, Cash, but there's something, I see you.
Become a speed trap. Will we become Bridgewater, Woodstock?
Yeah.
And I don't wanna see that.
Well, the other thing too is we've already been down this road once on one road in town and we'll be changing every speed limit in town before we're done.
Right. Uh, now, I, I'm, my personal view, I would go with this, but I think when it comes to the cost, I would bill it to the school and let the school bill the four towns, because that's a safety feature for everyone that goes to that school and whether they're from Clarendon or Schuylkill or Wallerford or wherever. It's, it's a school issue, but it's been right to wire attention, is what I'm seeing. But, uh, I think probably down to twenty-five in the school district is certainly fine with the flashing lights at a certain time.
School zone.
Yeah, school zone, what we're on calling.
How many roads we got over that are forty mile per hour?
This one here.
This one Creek Road, right?
Creek Road?
North. Creek Road North is, isn't it?
Creek Road.
Creek Road's thirty-five, isn't it?
Forty.
No, it's forty.
Forty, up a U.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And I don't know what, I don't know what El Frecha is.
That's forty.
That's forty. There's no signs on it. I still don't see any signs.
That's forty.
Yeah, so there's three roads?
There's signs.
There was sign there.
What's Cold River Road? Is that forty?
No, I don't think.
No, that's thirty-five.
So, you're looking, you're talking about three roads that aren't, and how many other roads we have that are thirty-five or less?
What's, uh, what's, um, East, East Clarendon Road?
Thirty-five, I believe.
Yeah.
I think it's thirty-five.
We got a couple of roads that are twenty-five.
Well, the dirt roads.
Yeah, West Timoth's Road is actually twenty-five.
Lockham Mountain's thirty-five until you get to East Timoth intersection and then down the hill to the Ballfields.
Yeah, that's twenty-five. So, you're talking about changing three roads down to thirty-five, basically. The rest of the town is already there.
Only thing is you're gonna increase the revenue.
What's that?
You'll increase revenue of fines.
Though, is that the discretion of the officer to write fines? He doesn't have to write the fines. I mean, if, he can, I mean, um.
That's his job. That's what we hire him for.
Yeah, to make revenue for the town? I never did that.
Not to make revenue of town, but for safety and stuff.
Of course, yeah, but that doesn't mean he has to write the ticket either.
Well, at this point, looking at what we have written here, school zone speed limit discussion, so that indicates that tonight's meeting, we wanted to discuss just the school zone. Does that suggest that to you guys?
Well, if you wanna change the subject, so to speak, then we'll do that. I just voiced some opinions.
I agree with Bob Bixby, what he suggested of.
Make it a motion, Bob.
Okay, I'll make a motion that, uh, we put in the flashing signs with the speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour within the school district at Mill River on the Middle Road and, uh, I'll put into it too to bill it to the school and let them bill it to the four towns. I don't feel that our taxpayers should carry it for all four towns.
And could add to that and when school's in session or activity?
Yes, yes, okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
So, um, just for like.
I have to do an amendment for this. Um, um, is it gonna be off during the summer then?
Only when school, it's only when there's school in session or activity going on, is what Bob's motion said?
Right.
As well as who would pay?
We're looking at four towns at twelve hundred and fifty bucks a piece.
Um, Bob, with the timing of the lights to be maintained by the district?
Yeah.
I'm, if you're good to add that, I'm good to have.
Yeah, add that to it, yeah, that's fine.
So, the, the light schedule to be maintained by the school?
Yeah, let them control it because they're the ones that know.
And maintenance.
What there's.
Of the equipment.
Oh, once it's in, we're gonna have to, I'll tell you right now, the maintenance will be on us.
Yeah.
Once it's in.
Add that to my job description.
I'm, I'm thinking that if this motion passes here, when we call a motion, the next thing is to definitely get in touch with the school board and this is what the town is proposing, because somebody's from that school board is gonna come back and say, you have no right to force us to charge four towns, this is my opinion, the four towns to pay for this. Uh, they did not initiate it, so this is where this conversation's gonna go, I think. Um, at that time, that's when we can say, "Okay, let's have a school board, select board conversation on this."
Yeah, this is just to start the conversation.
Yep. All right, so...
Did it get their attention? Let's go from there.
I guess maybe.
So at the next meeting, do you want me to have like a draft amendment ready for you guys?
I think...
Or do we need to discuss?
It's possible that we'll be at that point, but likely I agree with Mike, that probably there will be a school response, which we will have to address before we're ready to do an amendment, is my guess.
Right, but I, I think when we went to the school board that night, we asked that we would have better uh, communication between the two boards. So I think it's only fair for us, the select board, to throw this down their alley, let them discuss it.
Yep.
And then we can go from there.
And it shouldn't just be the select board voted to have you pay for this.
Yeah.
It should be the current proposal of the select board is, you know, uh, it's not, we're not throwing this at them like, "Oh, you need to pay for this." This is the current proposal of the select board is...
Do you have a counter?
And do you have any input?
I will, um, send you a draft email first.
Yep.
And then send it to them.
Sounds reasonable to me.
All right, so there's been a motion made. Second is, we've had a discussion. Follos in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Make it unanimous.
Um, I'm saying no.
Okay, so then it's not unanimous.
You didn't ask that question.
Uh, I was trying to pull one on you. All right, R E M C appointments.
Yeah, so, um, I was at the last meeting and I reached out to TJ Lacks and Kevin Peck to be the second, um, committee rep, and TJ Lacks said he would accept it, and Matt Jacobowski. So, all you have to do is appoint them tonight, there's no forms to fill out, and then I let the Regional Planning Commission know.
So moved.
Second. Follos in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Congratulations, guys.
Kevin's over.
That TJ took it?
Yeah.
All right, Hazard Mitigation Plan Revision.
Um, so I just know, we submitted that to Vermont Emergency Management.
Great.
And it got kicked back. Um, so Stephanie talked with Vermont Emergency Management, and then those are the results from her conversation of where the plan stands. Um, and so I printed out sections of where there were changes needed. Um, and so she wants approval to send that back.
So the yellow are the proposed changes?
Yeah. My planning team said, "Leave it to the board." Um, if you want, there's a, I left one full copy of the plan somewhere on the table.
Yes?
Yeah, if you want it more in context. To me, they're very minor changes. I noticed in Appendix D, which is the summary, like a public comment, she just had to include pictures of her emails showing that she sent it out for public comment.
In other words, she wanted a list of the public comment. I know, like, is my understanding, actually the select board is a public comment?
I don't think she included the select board's feedback, like we asked.
Because the select board, my understanding of talking to her is a public comment.
I thought our zoning has been updated since sixteen. Is that the last time we did it? Been a while.
Yeah, but you guys never acted on it. With like the pricing. Mm-hmm. Yeah, that was when I came on board.
Yeah, that was the fee schedule. But I'm talking about the actual, I thought we went through a zoning update.
I haven't been here if there was one.
I mean, we're in twenty-one now.
Carol came in.
I thought we did one in like nineteen or eighteen or nineteen.
That's when Gail and Carol and all those folks come in. That's right, we did. Because we had a...
I'd be curious to look at that and see if that date's actually accurate, because I thought there's been a zoning update since then. Maybe it really has been sixteen, but sixteen five years ago? Maybe. Maybe it's been that long.
Yeah, that's when Carol was still a chairperson.
Yeah, maybe it's, it, maybe it has been that long. Been a while. We can pull them up online. I mean, they're on the town website. It'll tell you what the, what the date of adoption is.
When it was adopted.
Can you look that up real quick?
Yeah.
So these yellows, the only changes that we supposedly need to pass?
That's what she tells me.
These are changes that she's suggesting, and then if we okay them tonight?
She'll resubmit. Um, so the ones on the website say twenty-eleven.
Okay, I know it's been since then.
So maybe it was twenty-sixteen that you remember.
Maybe, I don't know. I wasn't here in twenty-eleven, so...
I'm gonna best work. What I was concerned with is the last one. The information and recommendations from the, uh, twenty-sixteen Clarendon Local Hazard Mitigation Plan were incorporated into the town plan adopted in June twenty-sixteen. Twenty-sixteen Town Plan includes an entire chapter dedicated...
Bureaucracy. That's all it is. Leave us alone.
So, as long as the states in here, we'll see that last one, like I say. Uh, key municipal regulations like zoning regulations and flood hazard area regulations have not been updated since twenty-sixteen. And that's because that's what our statement is, we don't want to change what we already have established. Am I correct in assuming that?
Sounds logical.
That's what we talked about when this all started.
You talking like page sixteen?
I don't know what page it's on, hold on a sec. Page twenty-six. Page twenty-six.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's what we, we said that we didn't want to change it, we like the way it stands now. And so by her putting in this, what she just wrote, is just to acknowledge the fact that we have not changed them, and we don't want to change them.
You're talking about that top, yeah.
Yeah, up there. And the same with the next section down.
Hey, Ben, Marine?
Doing well, yourself?
Not bad. Haven't chewed any gum tonight.
Just don't switch your tobacco.
Tell you the story later.
Okay, I'm looking forward to that one.
Yeah. Hey, Rob?
Yeah.
Can you do this?
Nope. All right, so where are we at with this? Let's, somebody do something.
I, I entertain a motion to accept what she has put in here. Yeah, of course he does. Everybody thinks I'm going crazy now anyway, so it is what it is. I entertain a motion to accept the things that she has suggested be added. Because in fact, the last part on page twenty-six...
It depends on what Appendix D reads, and I don't remember.
Which is your last three pages?
Up here?
Yep.
And there's no major changes that I could see just looking at that, other than just acknowledging the fact that we have not changed anything since twenty-sixteen. And that's what our intention is.
We don't want to change anything.
Hmm?
I don't know even where the twenty-sixteen one is in there.
Huh.
Maybe Jeff has a file?
I don't know.
Right here too. Because I know sometimes things are in this cabinet and not in the other.
Secret cabinet.
Sounds like she, she wants us to update our flood insurance as well.
Well, that's the one that's got me more looking at this of...
No.
This is what I'm looking at more than anything.
Yeah.
What, what page is that?
The flood insurance, which is at the top of the page sixteen.
Page sixteen, that's what I was asking.
That's the one that I'm really looking at and wondering, okay, what, what are we really doing here? I don't know if I have a copy still stuffed in here.
I would bet you do. If not, I might have one.
I have, oh.
What you looking for?
An old copy.
Like this one?
Is that the old one? Yeah, that's nineteen. So...
Yeah, I'm seeing page. It's got that same thing.
Which page is that?
It's on sixteen, the old one. Basically the same thing, I'm sure it includes enforcement.
There it is. So it does add another date.
Just say it's two thousand and eight, right?
Yeah, the old one didn't have that in it.
Are you, is it a firm date?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, that was a requirement that had to be added. If you look at the, um, review tool.
So again, it must sound like a broken record. A requirement of who?
Yeah.
For our plan. Right? This is our document.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But it's the state and federal.
So what real jurisdiction over this do they have?
They...
Good place.
They can only follow what we have in this document.
Correct, but yet they kick it back to us and say, "It's not good enough?"
Um... I, I think...
You see where I'm go, I mean, you, you see what I'm saying here? I mean, just...
It's like throwing horseshoes.
Well, I guess so, some of them. So that firm thing, whatever that is, the flood insurance rate map of August twenty-eighth of two thousand eight, that they are, that they are now saying has to be in there, has never been in there up until, and this is the two thousand, this is the two thousand eleven plan, and it wasn't even in it. Or two thousand nineteen.
We didn't have a two thousand nineteen plan, I thought we had a two thousand sixteen.
It's like we joined that NSIP in nineteen eighty.
This is, must be a draft of nineteen's then?
What does the bottom say on the front? She usually puts a draft.
Flash flooding of Gorge Road, two thousand nineteen. It doesn't have any dates on it.
That's the picture, that's the date of the picture.
It doesn't have any dates on it. But it says two thousand nineteen.
What about the top of the page?
The top of the page, the top of this page with the picture?
So what's your page sixteen say? Of course, that's an updated one.
The working draft of ten twenty-five.
Mine's home, I didn't bring it.
So that was when you looked at last meeting?
Okay, so this is junk. We can ditch it.
You, you want the sixteen? You want the twenty-sixteen?
Throwing all my papers away.
Yep.
I made it.
He at least made it, I didn't make it.
Cash is off to his filing cabinet. I don't know, why did you throw that one out? That you, that way you can compare?
Because that's, I want to compare it to what's been enacted before.
The twenty-sixteen?
Yes.
Okay, so I think I just saw that in here. Yeah.
No, it's nineteen too. That's what I got.
Yeah, I want, I want six sixteens for a minute. This is sixteen's? Yeah, this is the one. Has all the Irene stuff on the front of it.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so... Floods, page twenty-one. Yeah.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna get you upset, but I have two copies.
Gives me something else to throw.
Waste of paper.
Gotta wait till a Marine isn't sitting next to their desk.
Two thousand eight, downward. You have a file?
I might.
Trying to get to the flood stuff here. Here we go. This is the section. References twenty-twelve, Congress passed. I'm on, I'm in the two thousand sixteen plan.
Okay.
On...
I just wanted to see it.
Page thirty-five. And its current effective map is, so it was in there. August twenty-eighth of two, it was in the, it was in the sixteen plan, and so, so that's not cha, I just wanted to make sure we weren't having something slid under us to change something.
Okay.
So it's here.
It's in sixteen.
It's, it's here in sixteen, this is cleared and participated NFIP since nineteen eighty, and its current effective map is August twenty-eighth of two thousand and eight.
Okay.
So it's not, so it's not any change.
Nothing changed there, okay. So that's not a bad deal there then.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, anything with the federal and state government, I feel like you gotta do your diligence.
Absolutely.
With that answered, I'll be the brave one to make a motion that we send it back with these changes only, that are highlighted in yellow. With the changes in yellow only.
Highlighted in yellow.
No other changes.
Say a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing a no in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Me.
You are? Did you seriously, or were you just joking?
What bothers you, Cash? You've been quiet over there.
Trust him.
Welcome, welcome to, welcome to our lives.
If they watch this broadcast, I suspect they'll think the same thing.
Just the highlighted in yellow.
Just the yellow, just all were.
I'll go with it.
Okay. If it gets kicked back again.
Then, forget it. Might be a little harsher message back.
Come on up here, you know what I mean.
Uh, to make time, since we're already well over an hour, uh, I would make a motion that the chairman of the board sign on behalf of the select board, the paving grant reimbursement.
I get that too.
Oh, it needs all of us?
Received my, I received my.
Okay, so I'll say, I'll make the motion to say that the board, yup, the whole board signs.
Yup. I'll second that one then.
There, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Um, Rick seconded that?
Yes.
Make short order of the next one too, um, this chairman, I would ask, make a motion that Katie on behalf of the board drafts a letter of thanks to, um, Joseph Turner for his years of service at the transfer station, and that we officially post an opening for two weeks.
Let me read this.
Yeah, I've been interested a lot of interest from, uh, Mr. Gabauer.
This letter is to let you know that I am interested in the open position at the town's transfer station, I am retired and looking for a part-time job. The hours were great, let me thank you for your consideration, Horst Deivauer?
Gabauer.
Okay. Um, but we've sent him a message saying that, uh, we.
Have to post it for two weeks.
We have to post it for two weeks.
Yeah, I already let him know that.
Okay.
Okay. Which technically will be three weeks, because this is our long, there's three weeks before the next meeting.
And Joe did submit a resignation.
Okay, later.
Very brief.
Did he say I quit? I think I did.
Alright, motion made, seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Katie, I'm putting this little clip in here like this.
Bob.
Uh, Kevin, do you have, uh, any comments? Cemetery committee.
Yes.
Okay.
Ah, Marsh Cemetery, I've, I've got a dead tree I wanna take down, I had a large limb, I've been picking up trash all summer as I've worked in there. Had a large limb come down, cleaned it all up, Cash went by there today and was up there doing it. So I'd like to take the tree down before, I don't know how it missed, I got a picture, I don't know how it missed the stones that just landed, you know. I've got a quote from someone, he'll climb the tree and drop it piece by piece by piece. I've also talked to Brad Gilman, can you see me? I, I just realized he's probably, I've also talked to Brad Gilman, who will allow me, if I take down fence, I can drive around behind this cemetery and just drop it down in his field, but then it.
Still clean up.
Yeah.
So, I got twelve, it's gonna be no more than two hundred and fifty dollars, we've got about four thousand in the, in the.
Cemetery.
Cemetery budget.
It's cheap.
Yeah, it is, it is.
I'd like to get that done before.
Uh, the only question I have is, does that individual have, uh, insurance?
Insurance, yes.
Okay, I'd make a motion then to, uh, have Kevin go and, um, cast this guy there.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second it.
Um, please.
Any further discussion?
Please make sure that you get with Katie and I to make sure that we have all the proper documentation for workman's comp and all of that kinda thing.
Okay.
We have to have a signed, um, like a one-page contract, if you will.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No, Cash got that one.
Cash seconded that one.
I was daydreaming for some reason.
We gotta call him for merch.
Uh, Katie, I mean, Heidi, excuse me, do you have, uh, anything you'd like to report?
Um, no, we started budget tonight, our first budget workshop was at five P M., and our next budget workshop, um, will continue on, at, an hour before the next select board meeting, um, so five P M. on Monday, December thirteenth. Um, if anybody's interested, can see me, or you can come, it's open to the public, that's all I have.
Okay. Katie, do you have any?
I'm, I think I'm done talking for tonight, I don't have anything.
Alright, Cash, you have any concerns?
Uh, just to let people know residences and all, and whoever's traveling, walking mountain road, that it is not line painted and when, with bad weather coming, be careful going up and down that road with a new black top.
Is there any other folks other in the state that do that painting?
I'm not aware.
Temporary?
I don't know.
I think you're probably gonna find though, they're all black, like the products are all black.
Probably.
Thank you for the warning.
So. No, I'm all set, just, uh, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and stay healthy.
Back at ya, have a good Thanksgiving, stay healthy. Rob?
Same, I was gonna say the same thing, so happy Thanksgiving to everybody and.
Rick?
Ditto, and don't eat too much. I never do.
Alright, I didn't like any motion.
So moved, seconded.
Alright, so Bob, you're first, Bob, you're second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.